Doesn't go straight to the board. Okay, yeah, I wasn't aware of it. That's James. Yeah, I was. Okay, bud. Yep. Oh, yeah. It is very cool. Good afternoon. How are you? The house next to the 68th. And they don't use it. They've never. All the stuff to them. Their complaints. Larry.
Is the office locked?
Yes, you want me to grab you something?
I was. And that was on nine. Well, there you go. Hi, Eric. Okay. Yeah. Be better. I'm doing that. Oh, no.
He doesn't have one?
So you're ready for single ball? Yeah.
When he's chasing down.
I actually wanted to hear. That there's. Can we actually? The entire history. Your cover with the. So. My time, I leave. Maybe. Oh, we did. Yeah. Okay. All right. We have the other board members on.
No, they're not on yet.
Albert and Stanley are not on. All right, let's go ahead and do the flag. Eric, you want to lead us? There you go. I want to thank all these guys for coming out. We have a couple of rules of the room right now that we want to state real quick. The board members are going to be discussing these things in front of you guys. There will be a time for you to interject. Right now, that's not going to be your time. So if you guys just, you know, allow us to be able to discuss these topics and then you guys can chime in when it's the appropriate time. Okay, otherwise we'll never get anything done. Yes, there are agendas and. There's just.
Stanley's here, but Alden, she's not in yet.
Yeah. It might be much more to. Okay. We give everybody a chance to get their agendas and then we can go ahead and discuss some of these issues. One thing while everybody's here, I want to thank a majority of folks for getting their palm trees trimmed. We still have about 10% of the community that has not complied. Basically, you know, it works out to almost $20,000. We really don't want to collect that money. We'd love to have people get their palm trees trimmed, but we will be having a hearing on the 30th. For those that just don't want to seem to follow the rules. So I don't think anybody in here is going to be going to that. You know, it is. It is a problem when we do need to get those things trimmed, so. Anyways, as far as the meeting goes, initially, we're going to be discussing some of the, some of the things that were ACC issues that were brought up by the ACC committee. We do have. One of the, one of the things that was left out. That Paul, Paul Daley, Don Grant, myself missed on the, on the last CCNR change was about the gates. We do not allow wood fencing and we also do not allow the gates. They're supposed to be ornamental iron. So that was something that was left off of the prior CCNRs. Another change was that had to do with. The fact that we constantly are having to get variances for our front courtyards. There's already 300 homes that have courtyards that have combined with five foot or, or less in, in block wall. Four courtyards and so long as they're within the proper setbacks, which they have to go ahead and submit on their plan. I would like to be able to have that changed. And I know that the ACC would too, so we don't have to keep getting variances. It just extends the process two months and for somebody that wants to get their project done, that could be aggravated. So that's another thing that we are looking at. And there were a couple of other issues that we have, one of them being with the new, this was brought up by Sam Lancaster. With the new vehicles that we have, especially pickup trucks, our payloads and things are different than what they were back in the past. So what, what this does is this allows people to be able to, to have an F-250 truck or an F-150 in some cases. You know, we're not looking for double axle type things. We're just looking at regular trucks that have payloads that now are much higher. You wouldn't be able to park an F-150 truck in the driveway. What this does is this allows for those people to be able to park their vehicles there. And that does not allow for a chassis cap, which is a huge F-450 cab. That's generally intended for pulling large trailers and things like that, but major amounts of weight. That would be considered a temporary parking. And so that would be something that would fall under category 6.8.10 for temporary parking. The last change of that particular CCNRs, now this would be another change that we are proposing would be a change of, of age. To allow kids that are still living with their parents and going to college up to 21 instead of 18. There's quite a few kids that are going to high school that are still, you know, 18, 19, you know, that started late. Yeah, so, you know, kind of restrict those kids from playing golf and. We all, you know, we, we, we kind of look at that, so. We, I'm going to open this up to discussion with the board. Let's start at the beginning with as far as the ornamental iron. Is there any discussion that you guys would like to have on that? Uh, yeah, so. Previous CCNR said that we could have woods, so assuming that we have hundreds of homes that have wooden gates. No, we don't. We don't. So. We have a few. Okay, so are those people going to have to change those or? Okay. No, and one of the problems that you ran into is just like anything else with wood, when you say it's wood. There are some people that have spent $2,000 or $3,000 absolutely beautiful gates that have wood in it. And these are, these are, I mean, unbelievable. And then there's people that spend 75 bucks and it looks like it's going to fall apart in about a week. So, you know, there is no way of distinguishing between them. You know, it's not like you can specify in detail, yeah, you got to spend four grand on a gate. You know, so that's where the problem lies and it was just, I think it's more or less holding up in our, in our environment. We have a really, really arid climate out here and it heats wood up like crazy. And we can see that just in the fascia boards of our houses, so. Anyways, anybody else have any?
I have those quiet wood gates at my Pascina house. Wood and they're very, very nice. The desert. The desert, but it's the RF type of sign. Would that be allowed by a variance? That'd be something.
I mean, we can always consider a variance. I mean, there's always that option. We're not, we're not totally 100% saying, you know, it's just, if you're going to put in something that's of high quality, that's going to hold up. There's also, there's also composites, like a Trex, a Trex decking, you know, it looks like wood, but it sure is not wood. It's, you know, it's a composite product. So we're, we're looking at something that's going to have consistency and longevity. And, you know, as far as maintenance is concerned, you know, the problem is you as this owner may take great care of that. The next owner may never, ever do anything.
Because what I see that is, is when, we're talking about the walls that come out like even with the garage and kind of wall in your front area. That's where I see putting in kind of a wood like, like almost a residential door that's outside. That, that's kind of the look I prefer because you know, an iron gate is see-through and stuff. I guess you should put it back on. You know, so I mean, I can see that being a common quest, the combination with a lot of that wall.
Right. Well, there it is across the way. Have a beautiful front gate on there. But there again, like I said, that was put in, waiting for this. So anyways, those are some of the, you know, the options there is, is there anybody else that feels that we should just leave it as wood or?
No, I, I agree. If it's a, if it's a well-done, and there, there could be a variance there. If it's a well-done door-like arch structure type of thing that, that goes with the, goes with the, goes with the house, a Spanish type of deal, then I think that's, that's fine. I would like to see though mostly wrought iron. I think it goes better with all.
I was told, I'm not trying to verify it. I was told City of Desert Hot Springs has.
Oh, I don't know.
I don't, we don't, we aren't in there. I'm just saying. It's not something straight for us.
Yeah, I just know that the wood, the wood just holding up out here is just, especially with the winds they were saying.
Well, I, I agree. If it's a beautiful, you know, wooden gate, but wooden gates go and look pretty casual, pretty quick, some of them. Because like Jim said, some of the owners, I mean, you may be a really good owner and take care of that. And I really don't want to see plastic looking wood. I mean, I understand what you're saying. You're, what you're talking about is a, is not a material that's not exactly plastic, but, but in order for us to be able to say, okay, this is, this is the only kind of material you need, you can have. Otherwise, we might end up with plastic looking wood fences that tend to look really tacky at times. I mean, some of them can be very expensive, but some of them are just, you know, you can buy them online for X amount. That's my only concern. Trying to keep everything kind of in the same.
Alright, and Dave Stanley, I think he's on, is he on?
Yeah. Yeah, he's in.
Does he want to make any kind of a comment or?
Yeah, sorry. I, I was unmuted, but I, I usually I mute between comments and I guess I will not be able to do that today. You know, I don't have a strong opinion on that. I, I really look forward to hearing what the, what the members think today. I know one thing, it, it becomes a little bit arbitrary after a while if we start deviating from, from what we've used in our covenants. So I, I guess I would just err on the side of caution, but I would agree. Some of these $2,000 gates that I've seen that looked like they came out of a castle somewhere gorgeous, but I, I don't know. It's, it's going to be hard to regulate. So I, I'm looking forward to hearing what the audience thinks today.
Okay, so I guess we can go ahead and open that up to discussion for that, for the audience, yes?
The house on Pinehurst, since you're saying wrought iron, that house on Pinehurst that has the laced glass?
Yes.
So you're eliminating that also, that option, because you're saying just wrought iron only. So I, I think you need to be really clear about what is allowed and what isn't allowed. So I, using just saying wrought iron is okay, is not okay with me when we have this house that they did on Pinehurst. And that gate is something I would like to do because it's not wood, but it's.
No, it's gorgeous.
It is gorgeous, but you're eliminating it here.
Yeah, maybe the way we should reword that is that a non, how about an impervious, built out of an impervious product that wouldn't be disturbed by the weather? Something in that, in that respect. So that might, that might help. So glass would be falling into that category. Eric?
You don't have to overthink this. You put in, you rewrite it to specifically eliminate some things like wood plank, chicken wire fence, you know, which we know we do not want. All others will, you know, all other options will be considered, you know, by a variance. You know, let somebody come up, here's what I got. This is the materials I'm going to use. Pressurized wood. The Trex kind of stuff, the ornamental, you know, gate and, you know, combination. But every one of those has to be request, but just like when we submit plans for a new house, it's got to be reviewed before it's offered.
That's not a bad idea. We can actually have a, have a gate review versus we, you know, obviously there are things that we just absolutely do not want in here. We don't want to downgrade the community. So yeah, that's actually a very good idea. It allows people to come up with the correct options, some maybe that we haven't even thought of. So, you know, what do you guys think of that? That sounds like a.
Yeah.
Probably.
No chicken wire, no chain link.
Oh, we already have that on there. And what we can do is change it to.
I think what we, I think that's a little wide open. I'm not sure that's a great idea myself. I think if we took some time, we worked with the ACC committee and we identified four, five, six different options, similar to what we do on the rest of what we require for our covenants and get his conditions. We could come up with five, six different options, three, four, whatever, whatever it is. And, and then the ACC committee would, would have purview over that. And if there was a, if that was challenged by the, the member, then maybe the board would need to take it up at that point in time. But maybe we should consider looking at options and have them detailed.
Dave, can I, to that point, where if some new material comes forward, some new design comes forward, now we've got to change the CCNRs again to include it. If we just say what's excluded, then anything else can be considered. Doesn't mean it's going to be approved.
With a variant.
Agreed. Yes.
Alex, bear. Yeah, because we know we're not going to be including plastic and, and vinyl or chain link. So those items definitely.
Normally, I would agree with, with what you're saying, Dave. You know, I, I don't like setting ourselves up for a variance being required in, in so many cases. I just think this one kind of begs for it because it really is a qualitative decision on, on the quality of design of the gate.
Okay, so we'll, we'll table this one and we'll, we'll rewrite that and then put it out to, to the members for vote. But we're taking consideration what was said here. So that way when we do that, we can live to. Yeah.
If, if I could address the members and anybody streaming this today, I don't know if it's really been covered yet, but kind of the, we, we called this a town hall, but we're going to be talking about several topics today. The players' cards and some of these other ones. And we've found as a board that we really don't have the ability to meet as a group, as per our bylaws, to brainstorm on some of these things in our opinion, without this being an open meeting. And that's why we've attempted to do this today. Because we, you know, we want to, you know, try and abide by what, what our bylaws direct us to do. You know, we're very limited on the executive meetings. So that's kind of the idea of why we're here today in an open session. And, and I assume we're probably going to see more of these. Then the other thing, I'm probably going to need to cut out early myself. We started harvesting wheat today on the farm. And I just jumped out of the bomb to run in here. So I'll probably won't be able to stay for the whole meeting, but, but thanks for everybody for coming, for sure. So.
Okay, getting on to the next item. That would be the one where we're discussing the courtyard. And, and so what we're trying to do is alleviate the fact of taking it to a, a variance every single time somebody wants to build one of these. We still have to fit within the parameters of what the ACC guidelines are. So we have to fit within the setbacks both side and front. We also have to fit within the overall heights and what the product is that we're using to build these courtyard fences with. So on that, do any of the board members have any, anything they want to chime in on that as far as for discussion?
No, I'm good on this.
As long as it doesn't affect the people that have already got what they have.
Oh, no, no, no. What we're, what we're doing is we're just allowing folks to come from this point on. Yeah, and, and basically, the ones that already have it, they went through the proper channels. Well, they already went through the proper channels. Now, you know, I would assume they already got their variants and did it the correct way. So.
When Jim explained this issue to me, I went and looked for what he was talking about. And I was shocked that how commonplace this is. This is something like, you know, 30% of our single family owns that something like this. So why would we require a variance on something that is not the majority, but, but such in high prevalence? I just, that's just silly.
That's just how they red tape.
And I think they look good. I like it. I actually was looking at it going, you know, I could do something like that at my house. You know, really just to block the sun from my hottest window, you know?
I'd like to open that up to members. Does anybody have any, any complaints with that? Yes, Tom?
I don't have any complaint. I just want a little clarity. I've thought of a front courtyard for several years, but due to the fact being a sewer, septic system, I'm kind of waiting for the city or somebody to hook up to the sewer. So the old set of standards, as I understood them to be, was that if you had a garage that protruded out in front of your house, five feet, you could only bring the courtyard out even with that garage. But yet that garage is farther back than, than 20 feet.
Yeah, 20 feet is a setback.
My question is this. So now we can put a courtyard in 20 feet from the front of the seat, from the street. And it can be five feet high.
Correct.
And most yards kind of slope down. So is that five feet measured from a, the point where the 20 feet is in front of your house? Because most houses are about a foot and a half higher.
It's measured from the grade.
So, so do I get that foot and a half higher to use with my five foot?
It's off the grade of where your house is. So you measure where your house is?
Right.
Your actual residence is at a grade. So that would be where you'd measure it off of. And then you'd go five feet from there.
So I was just asking for clarity and.
You've got it. No problems. Everybody likes that one then?
Well, no, you just, you just confused me on that, Jim. I'll tell you that right now. It sounded like if, if my house sits two feet higher than, than what the grade would be 20 feet from the road, I might have a seven-foot-high courtyard wall. I mean.
No, you're not. It's going to be five feet because, Dave, it goes off the grade of the house. So you're not going off the grade of, of the road. Otherwise, you could have, I mean, Phil Anderson would have double wall. Where the street is. If you're on a hill, you would, I mean, that would make sense. So you go off the, the, the grade of the house. That's going to set grade for your, for your wall.
So I, exactly my question. So that means if my house is sitting high and I'm going out towards the road, let's say for argument's sake, I leave my house, I go 20 more feet out toward the road and I'm allowed to be five feet at my house. But when I get within 20 feet of the road, I could be seven feet tall. So I.
Correct. And the reason being, Dave, is because it's measured off. Typically, when you put a courtyard in, it's going to be at the grade of where your entryway.
I, I would be opposed to this then, because I think it would need to be stepped down. I don't like the idea of 20 feet from the road, just because somebody's house is high, they might have a seven or eight-foot block wall 20 feet from the road. Based on, I think, I think we're approaching it wrong. If it's based on the grade of the house, I think that retaining wall or the courtyard probably needs to be stepped down.
We've never, we've never done it in the past and the variances have been granted based on the fact that people have, based off their grade of the property. It would be real weird because if you think about it, it wouldn't protrude typically past your garage. Most garages, they make them out as far as it possibly can. Because we're, we have small lots. In Tom Spencer's case, they didn't, but, and nor did they on mine. But, but a lot of them do. Some of them are even really close. So if, if you're looking at it, it's going to be at the same elevation of what your, what your house is built on.
Well, I'll tell you, anybody want to drive by my backyard and if you look and see what I would have, I would have had a 20-foot block wall if I would have done the same thing on the back of my house. I had to stagger my block wall down in order to be in compliance with the height issue back by the golf course. And I, you know, I don't, I don't want to split hairs here, but I, I think we need to think about this one a little bit.
How do we feel about that, guys? I'm, I'm fine. Okay.
I'm fine.
Consider a five-foot wall with two-foot footing, basically.
Yeah. The back of both of our houses, Dave, dove off because of the golf course. Now, our, our streets are, are, are level. So, you know, you know what I'm saying?
I can just be quiet, but I'm telling you, I can, let's go down on, on Pinehurst and you can see, I can name how many people's houses drop off 15 feet from their house down to the street. So I'm just going to leave it at that. You know, it's, it's going to be up to the membership because they're going to vote on this. Not, it's not our decision. So.
Yeah. And keep in mind, we're not putting the, the, these are not set on the street. So we understand where we're talking. They're set 20 feet back from this.
Yeah.
Because I can see, when I stand, my wall comes to here from the patio when I look out. But if I go around the other side, we're slowly down. It's open on head, but it's still the same size.
You're allowed to have five feet level from your grade. So, I mean, nobody's going to put a courtyard that's going to slope down. You're going to level your grade. Your backyard is a different story because you're going to put the wall out and you have the right to level your backyard. We, we had to do that on a couple of houses on Pinehurst where people went, wow, that's an eight-foot-high wall. Yeah. Because the guy wants to have a level backyard. So he can use his backyard. And Debbie McGowan did the same. So did the other gal. So, you know, there's just some, some things are a little more radical.
Daddy, can you hear me? Jim?
Yes.
Can you hear me this, Eddie?
Yes, Eddie, I can.
Hi, thank you. I just figured out that I was muted. So I can understand that. But, you know, I got to agree with Dave because
Hi, thank you. I just figured out that I was muted, so I can understand that. But, you know, I gotta agree with Dave because um, on the grade of our house, you know, it slopes up, and if I'm looking at the grade, the home is versus street level, you know, like Dave said, we're up a couple of feet, so I gotta better understand how you're measuring grade here.
It's off the height of the elevation of the home, like your neighbor, your neighbor next door has a courtyard. Okay, if you're standing on the street, yes, it is eight feet above your head.
Yeah.
You're standing out on the street, but we don't measure off the street. We measure off of where your, your grade is
Okay.
You have to have a constant. If we don't have a constant, then everybody's gonna be having these crazy fences. It's gonna be, it's gonna be, it's gonna be nuts. I'm good.
My, my only comment back to Dave and and to to Eddie is when we put our courtyard in the front on where the grade was, was five feet, six inches. So we had to get a variance at that time, and this is been fourteen years ago to do that. Uh, but again, from down the street, you know, it does look like it's higher, you know, but that's just the illusion where it comes out past the garage, that's where it's flat.
Correct.
So, yes, people need to be able to do what they need to do in order to make it aesthetically pleasing. Put in a courtyard with a wall like this, I mean, the whole point is to create privacy um, and another place to sit without the neighbors going hi, 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 you know? So, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm in agreement with this.
And then like I said, ninety-nine percent of the homes, the building pad that they're built on, it doesn't have like an elevated or drop-down garage or anything like that. They're generally all on a flat, level plane. And that's what we're talking about is generally the setback is right at or a little behind is where people will build those courtyard fences, but they'll be flush with the garage. So the garage is on the same grade as what the, what the home is generally.
It, in theory, it it may, I think we're oversimplifying this, we really are. Um, because you, you go to the Senator's House on on Pinehurst, and his driveway slopes so fast that if he was allowed to go five feet at his garage or at his house and keep that same constant elevation to within twenty feet of the road, that thing would be twelve feet tall.
It's twenty feet from the curb to your house.
Yes.
Yeah. It's not twenty feet out towards the street, it's twenty feet from the street to your
That fact is not lost on me if 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 you're trying to educate me with that, and I stand by what I said. You, you go down Pinehurst and you will have a twelve-foot-tall block wall, and all of a sudden, we're gonna be saying, wow, we didn't see that one coming, so, you know, whatever the, the the members will vote on it, but I think we need to do a little bit more
Wait, there's another member. She wants to speak.
Oh, we have another.
Hi, Jim, it's Sandra Redriff. Um, I don't have this kind of courtyard system, but are we overcomplicating, are we just talking about a five-foot-high wall of building material and wherever it is, it is on your grade?
Yes. Uh, Sandra, it has to fit within the setback.
Right.
So your setback would be twenty feet from the, it's twenty feet from the street.
Right.
And we're, we're going off a grade of the house, okay, so grade of the house is gonna be, you know, unless, unless you have some kind of really raised or really dropped down thing you gotta step up to. Uh, that would be something that would be kind of different, but typically off the grade is what we're looking at.
Someone mentioned a few minutes ago that fourteen years ago, they had to get a variance because it was five foot six. Are we talking about five feet of actual building and however it looks from wherever it looks?
And so what we're trying to do is eliminate the need for variance. Yeah.
I had to have a variance because of there was some
Is this solved by the limitations that county ordinances are putting on us? I mean, I don't think the county will
Jim, I think we should have hammered this thing out as a board before we opened it up. What, what you told me was that we were gonna open it up, okay. I, I thought we were gonna open it up to public comment at the end of the meeting, but if we wanna do it on a case-by-case basis, let's at least have the board members finish where they're going with this.
We actually did, Dave. We, we, everyone here is, is wanting to make the change.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Have you been by our house on Doral? Our house sits on a hill like this. We have a courtyard that goes around. When I stand in my courtyard and I look out, I can lean on the wall, it's really great. But when I go out to get my mail, I have a gate, when I go out to get my mail, the wall is up here. But that's because my house is up here. So if, if you can't have it smaller, or I
Jim? Okay, what I can support. I'm not gonna be able to do this. That's as high as you can go.
Correct.
Okay. It'll slope. The grade, grade, your house is zero. When you shoot it with a trench, that's zero. So you go from there. And you go five feet, and the county will not let you build it seven feet, eight feet high. They're, they're gonna make you right there where the code is. No matter what you do. I agree with Ken on that. I would, what I could support, uh, Jim, is I think we need to keep a variance uh, on the table, and I think if, if you're a lot that slopes toward the road and it appears that that block wall is gonna be really high, then you would need to get a variance at that point in time, but I, I think that we're probably only
I see the point that he's making here, because if you have a house that's on a high grade, theoretically, you can take a, you know, a really large outside wall of that outside by the street level with the street. And, and go back twenty feet. So in those instances where you have a certain degree of slope, you could put in, if you're still to have a slope of more than this, you need to have something that's gonna aesthetic and easy from the street, otherwise you're gonna have a problem like this, whether it's the front of your house or the back of the house that's going
If you take a look at Meredith's house, right, you can walk right out here and look, it's right here. They have a courtyard. Okay. They have a slope.
Do they have a slope?
Am I right, Tom? Tom Stocker? You parked there today, that Meredith's, right? They have a slope on their driveway, right? It's probably a good four feet.
As long as it's five feet on one side, on outside.
And all we're looking to do is just terminate the need for the variance, that's all. If they're gonna build it five feet, then we don't need a variance, that's all we're saying. If they're gonna build it ten feet, then they're gonna need a variance.
Jim?
We already have it now. Have you driven through our complex? We have over three hundred homes that have that already.
I'd like to hear from
People wanna do it, then why not? We can't change it now. I mean, how are you gonna tell somebody that moves in here when there's three hundred homes already allowed? I'm sorry, you can't do that. It's not gonna work.
Jim, can, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
It, it seems to me, some people have the impression you're gonna have a twelve-foot possibility of a twelve-foot-high block wall. That is not the case. The wall itself would only be five feet.
Correct.
The top of the wall could be twelve feet from the road. But that's totally different than a twelve-foot-high block wall that somebody mentioned earlier.
Okay, that would be like saying that your house is, well, all of our houses could be no higher than eighteen feet. But if you live on a hill, you can only build your house ten feet high because you'll be over eighteen. Okay, um, the next one would be about the, um, the trucks. And uh, that has to do with um, the payload capacity of, of trucks. Uh, what we're looking to do is, um, in fact, Sam can probably speak on that better than I can.
Basically, what we're, what we're doing, there's the, the payload capacity of, of vehicles today, pickup trucks today, have changed dramatically. Uh, Ford F-150, for instance, looking at this variance, you can't park them anywhere. Okay? What we're doing is changing that. You can park your pickup in F-150, F-250, if you have a pickup. But no cabin chassis. A cabin chassis is basically a truck. Take a truck that doesn't have any bed on it, okay? You can make that cabin chassis, you could make that into a dump truck. So a cabin chassis, no, we don't want in here. Those are basically trucks that that contractors would use, uh, uh, you know, like a dump truck or, or, yeah, steak bed, that type of thing. Those are cabin chassis, commercial vehicles. But an ha, an average pickup truck today, the payloads are, are much bigger. And it's not gonna harm, I mean, an F-150, looking at what we have written here today in this, you wouldn't be able to park it on the streets. You wouldn't be able to park it on your driveway. So we're just changing it to say, hey, if you got a pickup truck, you can park it.
Yeah.
That's it.
And we eliminated the, the chassis cab.
Yeah, no chassis caps.
And, uh, yeah, those, those can be here temporarily, or, you know, say you're in a contract that's using a dump truck. Now, you can use it for the day, but then once that time is up, you can't, you can't, uh,
Leave it there.
You can't leave it there. How do we feel about that, guys? I'm fine with this. You okay? Everybody, Dave, we good with that? About, about any, any members? Does any member have a comment on that at all?
Talk about cabin chassis, steak bed, dump truck, delivery vans, that kind of thing. And, and you wanna make sure, wanna make it very clear as to, you know, what cannot be parked on the street.
Yeah, and that's, um, and that's the, yeah, the chassis cab actually pretty much, I think
Covers that.
Covers that.
What that is.
Well, I'll find out real quick.
No, I, I, no, I understand what you're saying, Rick, and, and, you know, we could just say no chest cabs, I E, steak beds, dump trucks, et cetera. I, I, I understand where you're coming.
No, no, with, with, with a back, a back box, not a, you know, a toolbox.
Oh, toolbox. Oh, utility truck.
Um, what about the truck that's parked on clubhouse right now, that's working on that house? Right down where you cross on number eight? Right, but, well, I know, he left it overnight, I'm just saying. Right, something like that.
Well, the intent of the rule is that we don't wanna have let's just say, let's just say I start parking, like, if I buy a, a dump truck and I start bringing that home and parking it at my driveway.
No, that's a no.
That is a no, and that's not right.
It's a temporary thing.
And, and, and that's what, it would fall under what they call temporary parking. So you can get a permit, a parking permit for that, um, but that's not even a, uh, that doesn't even have a license, it's not registered. It's a petty bonus for, you know, moving all kinds of, you know, trusses. All stuff like that around. Okay, so we're all good on that one? We don't need to really do much more on that. Um, next one would be, uh, the, uh, the change of eighteen-year-old club members, uh, to allow them to be twenty-one, assuming that we have more uh, families coming in here. Uh, demographics have changed, and we have people are gonna be coming in here of all different ages. I see a lot of little kids in here, a lot of teens as well. Um, so, you know, the thought there is, if you're going to school um, and uh, you're going to college and, uh, you know, you still are here and you wanna, you wanna live with mom and dad, wanna play golf. Um, I don't know that that would be too much of a hardship on the club to allow them to do that. What do you guys think here?
Uh, always, are we gonna make it twenty-one and under or under twenty?
Twenty-one and under.
Cause our current is effectively seventeen. No, no, my son was cut off on his eighteen.
Well, that's not the way it should, it should be. Is that, is safe right there?
Problem is, we're inconsistent across our bylaws, C C N Rs, and rules and regulations. They all say something slightly different.
Well, we need to make sure that they state the same. Let's discuss the, um, eighteen-year thing. So, uh, board members, do we have any issue with, uh, twenty-one and under?
Uh, question, question on how that's
I got one other question for the
A, a question on how that's defined. I really like the spirit of the idea of moving it to twenty-one for sure. Um, there is, there's still just two golfers in the house, so if my wife and myself decided to have another child at our child be a golfer too?
Yes, yes, we are rules are.
You know, I'm
Here's one thing I'd like to discuss, um, with the board, uh, and, and see if we can throw it out. Just, I, I, a lot of us are grandparents, right? And we have grandkids, and they're not living here with us. They come and visit once in a while. Would that be something that we might wanna consider, uh, to allow a, a grandchild to play?
Was this still the board talking, Jim?
It's a board talk, actually.
Yeah, in my case, growing up here, um, I, I had privileges to till twenty-four, cuz that was the old rule back in the dark ages. And it was my grandparents, not my parents, but my grandparents were they claim is the dependent. I was their dependent. So we made the tax change partially so I could get benefits. But I lived more than half the time with my parents.
So, are you done, Steve? I'm having trouble with it. Anyway, um, I obviously have a dog in the fight, being a snowbird and having grandkids. I, I'm just worried about I, I'm just worried about the effect on Mission Lake's country club's budget if I don't pay for my grandkids in the future, because I'm going broke paying for these kids, I mean, I, I'm not kidding you, I pay a couple, I wouldn't be surprised if I pay a couple thousand a year in gas fees. And this year, you know, my grandkids come down when they're sixteen years old, it's a rite of passage, they travel by themselves. It's a, most of them golf, they all golf, and it's kind of a, a, a golfing trip among other things. But, you know, that week is, is an expensive week, these same kids are playing school golf, okay? And if they lived in desert hot springs, they probably have access to my golf course, and they don't even have any ownership there. And I'm okay with that, I, I am okay with the DHS kids that are playing school ball coming out, as a matter of fact, I totally support that.
Yeah.
But, uh, you know, I think, Jim, your, your question is, is valid. Um, when these kids travel down to, to grandma and grandpa's, and it's not just snowbirds, I mean, the permanent residents have grandkids coming down as well. And uh, so I, I like that question, and I, I guess I would personally be in favor of that myself.
Yeah, the only reason I was asking.
How do you regulate?
Well, that's, you know, and, you know, it is, it is an issue there, I just brought it up as an option, but maybe I shouldn't have.
Well, I, I, I think that's something we need to put, put that very closely, and the reason I say that is, number one, how do you regulate it? Uh, you know. I, I don't know. A lot of juries out.
No, it was just, it was just something I brought up, it is, and, you know.
You know. But as far as your, your original thing, I'm in favor of moving it to twenty.
You have the ability to do that. Actually, I think. Yeah, well, and it's like I said, this is something, it's not even a, we're just kinda added in, just, oh, well, we're talking about it. So, uh, I, let's just, let's just, let's just not go that direction right now, we bring that up. We're not gonna do the grandparent, grandkids, so.
One, one, wait, wait, one of you can get a round back is a custodial grandparent who has, we, I know people who are raising their grandkids.
Oh, yeah.
And I think that having a custodial, they're hundred percent responsible for that child, would bear uh, something that you should consider, so it's not just the unmarried children, but I think if somebody has full responsibility, that should fall under the same.
Yeah.
Name.
Well, it does, safety living in the house. Well, and then it would, actually. Same with qualified.
There's a simple. Family uh, uh, guest price, so our, you know, whatever our, our, our guest rate is sixty bucks, and family prices thirty bucks.
Yeah, and that's something we can discuss with.
Age related.
Yes.
So Connie, Jim, Connie would like to speak. Connie would like to speak.
Yeah.
Yeah, hi Connie.
So, uh, based on what you published as what you were gonna consider as a child under twenty-one. My comment is, it needs to say a full-time student. And a full-time student could be twenty-three or twenty-four, so I don't know where the twenty. But normally, normally, it's under, it's like, it's normal conditions that I've seen in other clubs have been twenty-four and under, full-time student, not just somebody who's working at Taco Bell and living with mom and dad. That's the first comment. The second comment that I have is the person, if you're going to allow children or adult, young adults or whatever, to play, they need to be residents of the household. And if there's an issue with grandchildren, then have a, then you can always implement a child's rate, a, you know, a family child's rate that could be less to, 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 and to speak to Dave's issue with his grandchildren. But just to, just to say, all grandkids get to play for free, you could have somebody that lives there, that lives in um, LA, and they could come every weekend and play for free, that's not, that's, you know, so, my, my suggestion would be that if you want to do something around grandchildren playing, that you could have a, that do not live in the household, that you could have a a, a family child rate, so.
Right, and the ones that are actually living in the household are entitled to um, to play anyways, so. Up till, right now, up till, up, up eighteen or, or younger right now, the way it's written. So, we're gonna just change it to twenty-one. Oh, yeah, we're not, we're not determining that. Yeah.
We're just determining, we're just determining the age factor right now.
Exactly, but it's gone.
Yeah, it, it always does.
It always comes.
We, we were allowed to play grandchildren until the trans卡for age twenty-six, I think Connie said very about the point. About the age of twenty-four, is there a full time to be?
Oh, the bachelors, they're like to. I wanted to say, I agree with Rick and um, Connie in that maybe a family rate, because it's not only like grandchildren, but it could be a son-in-law or a daughter-in-law or whatever. If you keep extending, you know, having grandkids come every weekend or whatever, um, some grandkids probably would, I mean, you just, I think you have to have a limit on it, and, and maybe just a family rate would be good.
Yeah, I, I, I like the family rate myself, I think it's fair, and it fits in that position better. Yes.
Uh, to everybody's point, to Connie's point, and it's a really good point, as far as local uh, people would be able to take advantage of having the grandkids out there all the time, and I do understand that. We actually do have a, a cost savings mechanism in place, and I was not smart enough to learn it five or six or seven years ago, but I did this year. So those juniors under eighteen are paying half of a guest rate. Now, we raised our guest rates to eighty-five bucks, so it was still brutal, you know, it was still forty, forty-five bucks around. Um, but I guess there is something in there, but, yeah, I, I, Connie's point was well taken, and I, and I think that uh, we just need to have a rate for, for uh, those family members, but we need to define the family members, because this board is, you know, I've, we've kicked this around a little bit. And the problem with being a, a winter destination, uh, a lot of people have, you know, brother and sister-in-laws come down and, and aunts and uncles and, and you know, forty-year-old children, and, and they don't need a discounted rate, they need just a family, you know, uh, probably our guest rate. If our guest rate was down. We're not trying to turn.
No.
Can we move on?
Okay, so, um, it sounds to me like everybody's pretty much on board with the twenty-one, um, at least, as a minimum change, I guess, uh, when you.
Um, I, I have to agree with her, I think in the state of California and, and lawyer people that are up there, um, I believe the state of California recognizes unmarried children under the age of twenty-six.
Well, yeah, but we're, we, we, we can turn that off, we, we don't have to follow that.
No, no, I know, but I just.
Oh, yeah.
I'm just.
One of the.
Could go as high as.
We, yeah.
Twenty-six, twenty-four, twenty-six years old, they're still living at home, they are like somebody else's student.
Yeah, those are the professional students.
Yeah.
Those are the ones that we usually show them, all right? Okay, so we're, we're, we're looking okay on that.
Mr. Nelson.
Move on. Okay. Um, oh, Connie, yes.
Uh, don't forget, when you make this change to twenty-one, it needs to say full-time student. Don't overlook that, it's not twenty-one living in the household, working at Taco Bell.
Now, we're doing twenty-one living in the house, doesn't have to be a student, and say nothing about a student.
It should say, student.
Well, if.
But, yeah, let's move on to the next, um.
Oh, sorry, she wasn't gonna speak.
We can't hear.
Oh, well, okay, all right.
Okay, um, this is probably what most of the people are here for, and that is the uh, the non-resident player's card or a resident player's card.
Is it for golf only?
It's, it's only for golf. Um, it's gonna be, as I, as I hand out, the, the, it's at the discretion, open play days are at the discretion always of the general manager, the head professional, and or the fourth superintendent, we can have a major frost or a major rain that closes the course, they're the actual, the ones that are gonna determine whether or not we're playing golf that day or not. And we have to follow what their, what their recommendations are. Um, basically, anybody who plays um, on our golf course will have proper golf course etiquette. And um, and we do require uh, people to follow our, our, our rules and regulations, which they'll be, they'll be given um, the rules and regulations, so they understand. Um, in the case of a non-resident card, these are people who basically can be from Belgium and come here and buy one if they want. Um, you don't have to live in close, in close proximity, if you live in Orange County, you wanna come out and do that or whatever, um, so be it. It, it also was set up pretty well for people next door, uh, if they wanted to purchase a card. And um, and then we also would require a trail fee, if they're gonna use a private cart. If not, then they will be billed the cart fee each and every time they go out to play, if they do not have a private cart. Um, we have not determined pricing or anything, this is just at the beginning stages, and it's um, we're looking to see if this is something that would be feasible. Uh, the other thing with um, this would also be, um, we would allow proration as a new purchaser. But if, once you buy a card, that's it, you come back the next year, um, you have people that would actually take advantage and just buy the card for six months, and, and then, and then get, get prorated off of that, and then come back and do it the next six months. So in order to keep that loophole from happening, we would have a non-proration, um, it would just be a one-time. Uh, and then um, no refunds, and you can, you can rate it the way it's written there, uh, it's just the start of something we can add to it. Uh, board members, what the, what are your views? Thank you, I wanna mention the limit. Oh, um, yeah, and then, there again, there is a limitation on the amount of these, we, we're not looking to load this place up with five hundred outside golfers. Um, initially, we're looking at twenty-five and see how it goes. Um, we also are not gonna be giving these things away, so if they're uh, uh, they're, they're, they're not gonna be cheap. We had to pay a pretty penny to be able to be membership, and to, uh, and, and we paid quite a bit every month, so we're not gonna be giving that away, so. I, not yet, Rick, we're doing board stuff. Okay, uh, does anybody have anything to chime in on?
Yep.
I don't have a problem with it, as long as, I know it's one thing the board has been discussing extensively in that price. Because I just feel that it's only fair for all of us who pay an annual fee and a lot of money to live here, plus our homes, that if you're gonna come here and play, I don't have a problem with that, but you're, you're gonna pay, because if you don't have a little skin in the game, you're not gonna care as much, so, um, I just, I don't have a problem with it, as long as it's um, price right.
Right, and so, again, uh, I think price is the main factor, and I'd like Ericsson put on, on what they feel it should be priced, um, because they are the professionals. Yeah.
So, I'd like to back up and give uh, people attending today a little bit of an idea of the background on why we've brought this topic up and what, what the motivations are. And it's really two-pronged, I mean, obviously, you know, from a budgetary standpoint, um, you know, we, we can use the money, obviously, it'll, it'll help the bottom line, but we got a bigger problem than that, and we've got people that have been defrauding you as a member consistently for years, and they've been getting away with it, and some of these people are costing you and I upwards of twenty or thirty thousand dollars worth of lost opportunity in golf fees a year. And uh, it's gotta end, and, and the board would like to find uh, kind of a win-win, a win for the uh, the people that would like to have their friends here, but they don't want to put them on their deed. And, uh, the board could get a win by maybe twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars worth of income a year that we don't have to pass, uh, don't have to collect from the membership in, in HOA hikes. So it's kind of a two-pronged issue that we're trying to address, the defrauding of the membership and uh, maybe raising some funds.
Dave, you just mentioned something about putting someone on your deed, you wanna explain that?
Uh, as it stands right now, probably the most common way that, that you have been defrauded as a member of this club, or an owner, I should say, uh, would be, uh, it's been a practice to, uh, we, in our bylaws, we're allowed to, to have two golfing members on our deed. And if you're a single person and you have a friend that you trust and wanna put on your deed, although it is not recommend, recommended, and it's, and it's highly risky, um, but you could put them on your deed, and you're in full compliance, and I don't think there's one member of the board that has any kind of issues with that, and I don't think the members do either. And that's full compliance, but what, how you've been defrauded is, uh, people have gone down with their friend, they've, they've gone to the county courthouse. They've done a quitclaim deed, they've put this person on their deed, before they even leave the courthouse, they have pulled them back off the deed, but they have a, a piece of paper uh, from the previous action that they get to bring back to the club, and that person is on the member roll until we either A, catch it, or B, don't catch it.
How do you catch something like that?
Right now, right now, we have no teeth, there should be a massive fine, uh, and, and we absolutely have to be diligent uh, in our audits, I mean, we, in, in most states, in, in the state I'm in right now, I can get on my computer and I can find out who the legal owner is of any property. I don't know about California, I can't. We have had our employees audit the, the county records to find out if people are in compliance and we found problems.
It's happened a lot more than we think.
Yeah.
So, um, anyways, as far as the board's concerned, um, uh, the non-player, and then we also have a, a resident player. And the resident player, the thought there would be to offer something out to at a, at a lesser cost, because you're already, this would be something that a member would purchase, uh, and then be able to offer to a, a friend or a family member, or if you have a rental property, you could offer it to your tenant, um, because you actually are purchasing this as a resident. Um, you're already paying five thousand dollars a year for, for fees, so we would, we would look at a lesser cost on that and able to uh, have uh, that happen as well, so. Uh, but there again, we haven't really discussed anything with, with finances, it would just be something that would be a little bit cheaper for uh, our residents to be able to, say you, um, say I'm a single guy and I got a gal that likes to play golf, and um, I don't wanna put her on her ID, because I, I have a trust, and I may not want to uh, include that person, but um, but I spend a lot of time with her and she loves to golf, and so if I had an opportunity to be able to purchase. So if I had an opportunity to be able to purchase something like that. I would be able to to accommodate that, plus I'm already paying five thousand. So I'm paying for the two, even though I'm using one. And then, you know, we have quite a few members that are in that boat. So it would be nice to offer that, I think. But you're not overstressing or overtaxing the course because. That maybe when that person had the spouse that maybe had passed away or whatever, they were both using it, so it's not like that's changed. So these are things that we're looking at to try to help members that. You know, that have that situation and. You know, it makes it tough because you don't wanna, you don't wanna, it's hard to wanna put somebody on a D, you know, and it's not, you're you're gonna you're gonna trust them fully. And, you know, it's hard, you don't take that lightly. So anyways, these are. These are. These are things that we would we've been talking about, so any of the. Board members wanna chime in on the resident card at all and then we can open it up. So again, I'm good with both of these proposals. I'm in favor of them. But I would like to get Eric and David's input on pricing, so.
I'm with you.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I I think I think your input is imperative, if you go ahead and do this.
I think it's imperative for everybody that's gonna vote on it as well, they wanna know. What's gonna be.
Exactly.
Yeah.
We haven't decided our number.
We haven't decided pricing or anything.
Do that at some of the courses below us, you know, down in Palm Desert and those places, they they do that, they do this.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and open up big questions. Sorry.
Okay, well, anyway, I just back to the point, it opening up for member discussion is critical. Because this whole idea is for the membership, it really is, the members are gonna have to decide if this is what they want. And so we're just trying to be creative and come up with some ideas and see what the members want. If the members don't want it, it's gonna go down. So, yeah.
So I have one more thing. That Eric just reminded me of. On the resident player card, the way that's gonna work is. You're only allowed to sell one of your spots for your lot. Right, you can't sell both. Okay, so if you own a property, you can't sell both. You have to keep one for yourself and then you can sell one to your buddy or your girlfriend or whatever.
What what if you what if you had multiple properties and you were, you had tenants?
Then you can sell one on each property.
Correct.
That would be the way to do it.
Yep.
I I would also like to hear from input from from the audience on whether you would want to allow. WGA and MGA membership for people with the players card. We certainly, you know, I I understand the member. Side of that saying that's a member privilege to be a member of the men's club or the women's club.
Yeah.
But our numbers in the clubs are very poor. And and I would really like to see more tournament participation and more club participation. So I I understand there's an argument inside and frankly. I haven't decided myself. Which way to go on that, that's that's, I just wanted to put that out there for you guys.
We have Sue Moore. Or Ketchum, I mean, I'm sorry.
Personally, I'm gonna kind of comment on what Steve just brought in, I think one of the things that needs to do is go back to the MGA and WGA and get a feel for them. But one of the things, I know you haven't flushed out these programs yet. But one of the things I would like to see on the non-resident is that they cannot make tee times. They can only make tee times after the tee sheet has been full.
Yeah, we were we were talking about three days first. Yeah.
So less than seven days, a non-resident can get a tee time.
Correct.
If a if a member didn't ask for it before that.
Exactly.
Gary, Gary was before you, actually.
Would this non-resident player card have to be voted on by the membership?
Everything we're talking about here has to be voted, so.
We've we've done it at least three times. Voted down every time.
Well.
Never been brought up.
Yeah, I I was told last time it failed by nineteen votes.
Correct.
So I wouldn't sit there and we put down.
Uh, shall we get it? First time, two thousand and seven, it was just ninety. They ten percent voted in favor of it. I'm all for it, I'm not against it. But it's something that's gotta be presented to the. To the membership in a way that they'll understand.
Right.
Voter, yes on it, it's always been voted down.
Well, mainly, Gary, what we're looking to do is to see if there's any. Anybody that, no, I mean, if we have some good support behind it. Then this is what we'd like to do is then go ahead and tweak it and make it right, so. It fits into, you know, what we're looking to try to achieve. Shelley Daly was.
Yeah, the only concern I have is, you brought it up, Steve, is about the WGA. Currently, you have to be a member of Mission Lakes Country Club, a member in good standing. So that limits that, however, does not mean our bylaws and rules and ranks can. Be changed, so that is a possibility of building a membership, but it's something that was brought up by the members that they don't.
And and if you read one of the requirements to be any of these cardholders. The reason I'm saying a member of good standing is because you could actually. Be suspended. And then have your buddy buy you a card and now you're all of a sudden playing golf again. That's why you have to be a member of the standing.
I I I kind of concur with with Susan and and I think the reason that we only got nineteen. We were shy nineteen votes, in my opinion only, is that there was no skin in the game. We were giving those away practically for free and that was why, I mean, no, it wasn't free, I said practically free. When you consider what we have at stake here in this country club, we're practicing even a way to raise. If they're if they have skin in the game, we'd be for it and that was, we were on that line before. If there's if there's skin and if they have skin involved in the game, then we would be for it.
Rick, Ketchum.
Okay, so a couple things. The resident players card, I don't quite get that, if it's your girlfriend and she doesn't live here. And she's a non-resident card, that's.
You're you're buying it though as a member.
Doesn't matter if you're the person using it as a non-resident.
I understand.
Now, for the a rent or somebody owns a property, it wants to allow, you know. One of their people to to play well, then certainly a a renter's card or renter's players card, you know, some or anywhere for that. Would make more sense.
So, Rick, it doesn't have anything to do with where the person lives that's getting the card, it's it's the person that owns the property. Okay, so the resident card, you would purchase as the resident and then you could sell it to, I don't care where they live. Okay, it doesn't matter.
No, I I I would disagree with that. Couple of things. You said, go to, you know, go to the. A proration or, then why not sell a six-month card too?
No.
Well, I'm just saying, why not, you're gonna have people that are so rich that maybe they stay, you know, in in you, but they they love the person they want to play. And I'm just saying, you're you're missing an opportunity, you're missing opportunities for more, to generate more income. And then lastly, to David's point about the the fraud and and what's the. It's how it works is you. In our in our sheets and ours, you have to have. A group of twenty-five percent ownership of the property. You have, you can only change the person on your deed once every twenty-four months. Okay, and the easy way to to fix what you were talking about, the agility or what Dave was talking about with people going in and then. They file two documents at once. Is and and this, you can get the service like fifty bucks a month to check on.
We bought it.
Ownership.
They already have it.
And we're gonna be pursuing.
But it's a grant deed and a grant deed costs four hundred bucks. Somebody's not gonna file a, if you require a grant deed, they're not gonna go, go drop four hundred bucks. So they can take the person off, you know, five minutes later with the.
We actually do, we do require a grant deed when we, when you've registered here. They have to have the red stamp on it, otherwise it's not.
Use a quick play to put somebody on and then take them right off and.
No, they have to bring a grant, yeah. In order to have them on there, so that's what we require.
And then and then lastly, we have a list of people who are not allowed to circumvent the circuit. At at the pro shop. Somebody walks in and says, oh, you know, you will, there was a a situation years ago. Where we had a member who had not played, paid his dues for years. And let his house go and then jumped on somebody else's island and played for free when he owed us ten grand. Somebody like that should.
That's a little bit of a violation of privacy.
I have an issue with that as far as the pro shop, I'm concerned, that's I'm going to ask them to please. A club policy. Yes, but they should have to, that's, they're an employee, you know, all sorts of stuff is gonna come up, you know, how. Verbal being inappropriate.
Karen, you're you're absolutely right and and. There are some privacy issues involved with that. And. We've kind of looked into that too, Rick, but it doesn't look like that's gonna fly. Okay, so just to let you know. But we're we're trying to circumvent. The 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 fraud that's been going on. And and this is one way with the residence card. That that may circumvent this, may not, but we're trying to, okay, so. That's the, that's part of the reason for this residence card.
Okay, I've got somebody on the screen and then I I'll hit you, Jenny. Yeah, and then Ron, Parks has been in the back with us.
Tim, can you?
I would like to. To offer an alternative to a residence card and I've had it brought up by people that. Rented seasonally or long-term is how about if we sell a discounted ten-round package? And. Just let them pay five hundred, six hundred dollars for ten rounds and. Let it go at that and. That's it.
We actually do that now.
I had a question about the non-resident card versus the resident card, are they basically gonna be the same price?
No.
Okay, so so how are you gonna, you have an idea of what you're gonna?
Yeah, basically, the non-resident card and that's something that Eric and and David and then. They'll probably bring it to the board and we'll discuss it.
Because I mean, this stuff does affect me a hundred percent. You know, I have a boyfriend who's, I've been with for four years and he. He likes to play golf, but I can't pay him, but.
Right, so what they, what. What what the what the bottom line is, we're trying to.
I mean, I'm already.
Put something out there that's gonna be economical for. For that particular situation, the non-players card. Their non-resident card, there's a difference here because. The resident. Card is for, is actually somebody who is is a member of Mission Lakes purchasing cards. You're purchasing a card for either either a friend or a family member typically. If you do have a a rental, it does offer that option as well. Since you've invested into our community, in a lot of cases, you know, there are people that have. Homes and have a rental property as well, so it would. It would give them the ability to be able to, you know, offer that out where they wouldn't normally give.
But I mean, you're you're planning on having that be a little bit better than the non-resident.
Yes, well, kinda, yeah, considerably.
We're gonna give you a family discount.
Ron Parks.
Hey, Jim. Can you hear me?
Yeah, hang on, Ron Parks is is up right now and then you're next, Eddie.
All right.
As somebody who has two rentals in here and a lot. I personally. And I don't think you're gonna get. And these are high rent. I mean.
Then you don't have to buy a car. You don't have to buy a car.
But let's just say, let's just say there is somebody with a with a.
But I have no control about you. I'm just saying is you wouldn't wanna be playing with the people or having to do it with people that I.
I I think it sounds a little bit scary.
The laws are very much in the wrench of paper. And you can't get rid of them. I could, COVID. I'm just saying, opening up a can of worms that you really would want. That is something. And rattle. You know, in my opinion.
Okay.
I'm just saying.
All right.
Be careful what you ask for, you might save a little bit of money, but you might be opening up a can of worms that you wanna do.
All right.
And and somebody who right now has lost a lot because of rule change, but now under my LLC, I have. Six, oh, four golf rights that now I have done. And and I'm paying for four, you know, paying on two properties with no golf rights. So.
All right, Eddie.
Okay, thanks. So a couple of things on this non-resident agreement. When we went out to the membership last, which I think was two thousand eighteen, we did lose that vote by nineteen votes. And one of the reasons we lost that was that in that agreement, we included swimming pool, tennis. The restaurant, all the amenities for the club, I think if that is tweaked down to include golf only. That that would pass with the members. We, and I wanna ask also, if you're using the agreement that we had, because it was. Well, well thought out, legally reviewed. It needs some amendments, but it gives a legal document that you can you can use for the membership to see what the wording is. And if it includes just golf, and there is skin in the game, because back then. I think our agreement was a thousand dollars initiation and five thousand dollars a year. And now they could opt out, but there was some conditions for that as well. And I would encourage the membership, when if this comes before them, to pass that because it is a revenue stream. That can help our club and not impact our golf course. So that's thoughts for that.
And Eddie, we do actually have it as golf only. And we wouldn't be offering anything but golf.
Are you using that agreement that was in place and just tweaking?
We we have bits and pieces of it that Wayne is, Wayne would be putting together the actual verbiage of this. So it would, it would actually be something somewhat similar. We're trying to make it a little bit more simple and streamlined. And and so that's kind of what we're we're trying to do with the thing.
It was the legalese that caused that agreement to be as lengthy as it was, if we can reduce that. And Wayne can all the better, but the members do have to have something they can look at, hold in their hands and understand. Rather, we're gonna charge five grand, it's gonna be this.
Right. Jack.
Yeah, hi, guys. I I just wanna. Say that I support the idea, the concept. You clarified the wording is, this is the starting block wording, the wording is definitely not enough words. Similar to what Eddie said, there's a bit of legalese that needs to be in there. But the main clarification is that resident idea of buying one card. And that a non-resident has a little more wording behind when they can play, when they can do tee times. That kind of stuff's obvious, but the concept is good. I think. I kind of agree with last time, the wording, not the legalese, but some of the wording on how many people. How it could be added to needs to be thought of. I don't think it should just be open now that it's okay, and let's say we do twenty-five people, that tomorrow the board's. A fifty people, seventy. And let's say we do twenty-five people, that tomorrow the board's pay fifty people, seventy-five, one hundred, it needs to stop somewhere.
Correct. Yeah, mainly we're looking to see the success of the, of the program.
Oh, and one other thing, this doesn't take away the ten round card from the public or anyone else?
No.
Thank you.
Um, I think that the real bottom, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I think the real bottom line to this is gonna be what you decide to charge. Because as I think it was Wendy said, you know, people before thought it was a very close vote, but it was, nobody had the skin, their skin in the game. And if you don't put it out there with enough price, and as Ron Park said, you might get lower level people playing on the course. So if you price it so that the people that want to buy in will be the appropriate members to our club. But but that's really the bottom line's gonna be, people will vote on it based on how much they think that they that the club will make in revenue.
Right, and and the other thing is, is that when we price it, you know, it's gonna sound a little high probably to a lot of folks, but when you think about it, if you're coming in here and you have unlimited golf, that means you can play uh, virtually almost every day, our weather's so good here. Um, except for October. And, um, well, you know, the winds are a little bit to deal with, but but really when you look at it, um, you know, you you could, oh, like Steve Extram plays like nine hundred rounds a year, but, um.
And the wind is good for your team play handicap.
But 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 I'm, I'm looking at like a neighbor next door, say, coming in here. Um, say you got somebody who's retired and they can play five rounds of golf for, for a week without even thinking about it. Um, you know, that really brings the cost per round down.
That's, well, that's that's right, that's, that, that's my point from if you charge five thousand dollars and somebody plays five times a week, that's twenty dollars a round.
Correct. And and that's where they're gonna, they're gonna come up with their idea of where the value is. So if, you know, if if that's the case, you know, well, i- if we, if we price it somewhere in the, you know, the, the five to six thousand dollar range, then that would be uh, something that would be probably close, I would imagine. Um, it would bring in a decent amount of revenue, plus there'd be a trail fee on top or cart fee. So figure the cart fee's twenty bucks. If you don't have a cart, otherwise you're gonna have to pay the trail fee. And we could make the trail fee more like an eight hundred dollar cost instead of a six hundred dollar cost. So, you know, we have that ability to do that as well. So a lot of different ideas as far as pricing's concerned, but uh, we do, we do not want to give that card away.
But that, but that might help sell the program to the, to our members when we vote.
Oh, well, definitely. I think so.
Okay.
Um, anyways, so those are, those are basically the, uh, things in a nutshell right now that we're talking about. Um, anybody else wanna, uh, yeah.
I just have a question, um, I know that it's a golf only, are you going to offer perhaps, so there are people in there now, it's not just you to come here for any exercise class. Are you, are you going to offer something like that?
No, no.
Nobody is, nobody's going on there, no.
Yeah.
Can use, can use the restaurant downstairs, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Karen, anything that's, Karen, anything that's open to the public is, is, is fine. Where, where we have to draw the line is, is that, you know, you could have, uh, uh, you know, if we're trying to limit it to golf mainly because these are people that want to come over and use the golf course. And they'll subsequently hopefully come up and use a sandwich or a restaurant, have a beer. Uh, we do have a gentleman over here.
Hi, everybody. Hi, I'm, uh, hi, it's Mike, I'm a, a new member, I just, uh, bought in this month, so.
Oh, great, yeah. Welcome.
And and that question on the resident card, is that, would that be just for people that only have one person on the deed? So if you already have two people on your deed, would you still be able to buy, you know, a resident card for a family member or somebody?
It would be a non-golfer, if you, say, um, in, in, Francis, hi me over here, he's got.
So in my, in my case, um, my wife doesn't play golf. Okay. So as long as only one person is playing golf in the residence, you can sell the other one. But you can only have two people on the property using the golf.
No matter how you do it, resident card or, or deed.
Mm-hmm, correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Kathy.
Okay, just only in my opinion, I think since we're allowing this, uh, the card thing, I think it's a good idea that we're allowing them to join to the WGA and the women's club.
I, I agree, because we, we have a lacking. Here's the problem, the men's club is getting smaller and smaller as we speak. Um, you know, uh, we, we need, we need members and we're not getting, you know, uh, new members, but that's up to the, that's up to the, the the MGA and the WGA to decide, but, uh, you know, uh, it's, it's nice to be able to have possibly some new members coming in.
Jim? Just, just want to say, because I I just want to point out with, with the one, you have one golfer, and you, if you were to sell a residence card for your other golf slot, would his wife lose privileges for other things?
No.
No. Just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
Now, as far as the golf tournaments go, I understand that, uh, the men's golf and the women's golf, they don't want that part of it, but what about the open club men's tournaments like fourth of July?
Yeah, they would, they.
They could play.
Oh, well, if they're, if they're a member of the.
As long as, yeah, that, that there's certain tournaments that are just strictly MLC.
We would, we would have to determine if they're considered a member and that would be something that we would have on our verbiage, that's what um, Jack and Eddie were talking about, we need to, we need to actually include that or weekly that from the proposal.
That's part of the fun, you know, if there's a Valentine's Day, you know, stuff like that.
Yeah.
Have your play.
It's gonna, it just depends, I mean, like I said, you know, we have members, members that are passing away and they want our replacement, so we need, we need more, more. Sadly.
Oh, we have a member on Zoom.
Jack, do you have a question?
Yeah, I'm not muted, right? No problem. I, um, I just wanted to get an idea on what your ETA is for getting the real wording or next steps wording, so we can actually opine on paper with words in front of us.
Well, well, we would, we would like to be able to get these, uh, proposals put together as soon as possible and, uh, we have to post them for twenty-eight days, uh, I believe, and we do have to put this out, uh, for a vote. Um, which we require a ballot. Um, so, uh, you know, it does take a little bit of time, so we need to get this stuff over to, um, if, you know, over to, to legal and have them look at it and make sure everything's, uh, the way it should be and and we need to, um, add in any input as well.
Okay, uh, then I would suggest, uh, that we shoot for opening day. That gives you, that gives you a bogey to reach towards, close, course is closed in October anyway. So August, September is coming.
Well, we're gonna try to do it quicker than, we're actually gonna try to get ballots out if we can uh, October, so that we can actually implement this by November first.
Okay, my caution would be then that it's hard to get to everyone's comments and wording together in a small amount. You guys can do it, that's okay.
Yeah, it's hard to get anything done quickly around here.
No.
That's improved.
That's why we, that's why we're shooting for next season.
Can I make a suggestion? We're gonna be talking about the, the wording and gonna have the attorney expense, we're gonna have to do a, a, fill the, the vote out, the right spot, twelve hundred bucks. How about we use our little constant content and send out a quick survey? Here's what we're considering, what do you think? See how it comes back from the membership and, you know, if you should proceed on that.
But you don't have all the details yet, so.
Well, if you have, have details to share with them, this is, this is what we're proposing as of today. This is what we're considering, you could go up with your numbers for pricing and whatnot. Send a, send a survey out, see how many members we have, find out what they like and what they don't like. It might happen to be a good pass.
Yeah. Well, here's one of the problems too, and that is we have to have four hundred and twenty-nine votes back.
Exactly.
So it's four hundred and twenty-eight plus one. So that's where a quorum comes in. If, if we do not have that, then none of this stuff is gonna pass. So whether or not it's voted for or against, we have to have at least four hundred and twenty-nine voters voting residences that come back. Um, not individuals, so, um, where we have a small group of people here right now and a, a group of people up on, uh, uh, you know, on Zoom. Um, you know, I, I think most everybody here was, sounded pretty positive about every single one of these things. With a little bit of tweaking here and there. Um, but, uh, yeah, I mean, that's what it's really gonna count, see what, see how many we actually get.
Yeah.
Uh, that are gonna vote, so, um, I don't have a problem sending out anything, uh, just as easily as we can, uh, uh, request people to, uh, I mean, I have no problem with emailing, uh, emailing back or, or give me a call or, or any of the board members.
Yeah.
And 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 discuss with some of your other, uh, uh, friends and, and find out what's going on. Uh, see what they, see what they think. Sue?
I just have a question came up, we're thinking about the twenty-five for the non-resident, right? Are you guys gonna go out and market? Or, or do they just fall out of the air?
We would be marketing it. We would, well, same way you would anything. We would market, first of all, we want to market to the people close by. You could also market, uh, we could put it in the local Desert Sun newspaper as well.
Yeah, it's the direct mail, yeah.
I mean, it would be nice to be able to market more than just that. Like market the sandwich and the restaurant same time. Um, you know, get people to come in here, uh, see what we're about and.
It's just that we have to do marketing, so that's.
That is, that, well, actually, before we, right when this board started, we actually had a marketing uh, person that came in and, uh, and then we, we kind of got off the, off it a little bit because we were dealing with our Jonas system and, uh, he's, he's a little wise to that as far as how to work with it. So we do have a marketing guy that we will be working with, uh, Michael Burke, Burke Productions. And so, uh, he is gonna come in and start working with us on that.
I still have all the EDB on stuff.
Okay. Well, anything that we can, if we can pass to Eric to help with any kind of program would be nice. But, um, but I, I think that it sounds, sounds like people are pretty positive with most of everything here. Is there anybody that has any negatives? Uh, uh, I mean, just absolutely this, ridiculous, we shouldn't do this. Is there anybody that has any feeling towards any of that?
No.
Discussed today?
No.
So, so it sounds like we're, we're at least going in the right direction. So, um, anyways, uh, with that being said, um, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Okay.
Thank you, thank you, thank.
I just want to make one quick comment, it has absolutely nothing to do with our town holiday, but there's gonna be a desert water agency district one election. For the first time, we're gonna have a representative for, we're, we're pretty much the largest community within that district one in Mission Lakes for the water district. And we have a candidate, a, a new member, Dr. Steve Bronak. He has, he's a PhD in data analysis. And he's a full-time professor at Cal State San Bernardino, both the doctoral studies program or the undergraduate program. He submitted his application for candidacy today. I think Shelby Daly's gonna be helping as his campaign manager. Uh, he's got backing of a lot of our core members. He's a really great, young, energetic, very smart, very educated guy. Before I was gonna endorse him, I, I went and looked into his background and he's extraordinary. And the guy he's running against is really kind of scary. And, and so we need Steve Bronak.
He's a new member.
He's a new member, he's wonderful, um, and, and he's really excited about this and he's digging into it hard. And like I say, he submitted his candidacy papers to that. Hey, thank you all for coming.